Good evening and welcome to the September 9th, 2024 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land use planning projects such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate or BMR housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or interested member of the public. There will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each of our specific agenda items, or in our this case, just the one tonight, as well as for general public comment. With that, I will call the role of commissioners. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Present.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Vice Chair Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Farrak.
Here.
I am Chair Schindler, and I am present. Commissioner Silin is... Let's see, how do we want to phrase this? He is recused from this evening's primary and only agenda item, given proximity to his home, and so thus is not in attendance tonight, as it is the only thing on our agenda. And Commissioner Silverstein is absent this evening. So we have five commissioners here in chambers, which is a quorum, and we will proceed. Mr. Prada, are there any reports or announcements in our next section of the agenda?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Schindler and members of the planning commission. So just one kind of report or announcement here from staff. So tomorrow evening, the council at its meeting will be considering, as part of the Parkline Development Project Proposal over at the SRI campus, a modification to the Development Agreement City Council Subcommittee. So it would be a replacement of councilmember Woolison with a new councilmember to carry forward the development agreement negotiation process with the applicant. So that's a key item on the agenda that I thought would be of interest to the commission. And that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Prada, I do have a follow-up question to that particular announcement. Is there any precedent for members of the planning commission to participate in those development agreement negotiations, or to advise via city council in the specifics of those negotiations?
Yes, thanks. Good question. So the planning commission does have a role in the project review process and will review the draft development agreement and make recommendation to the city council. So through that formal review process, the planning commission will be involved in reviewing the draft development agreement as part of the overall project land use entitlements, so including the commercial development permit for the master plan, the vesting tentative map for the partialization, BMR agreement. I could keep going, but there's a number of entitlements that are required to enable that project. And so when the development agreement is negotiated between the city and the applicant, it'll be brought forward through a public review process for the planning commission's review and consideration. The city council does have a different role in terms of it does create a subcommittee to work directly with staff on that negotiation, so two members of the city council. But that, the planning commission's role is limited to the public review process through this chamber, through a public hearing to recommend on that DA item.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think, again, what I've taken away here is that the subcommittee that is created to do the negotiations between the city and the applicant in this case consists of city staff and two councilmembers. So I think, again, just a follow-up question. Is there a, just, if, is there an opportunity for another group, either a member of the public, a member of the planning commission, a member of another commission, to be part of that subcommission on the basis of what is legally permitted or not? And is there precedent for doing so? Has it ever happened for other negotiations with developers?
I will need to look back, look into that and get back to the commission, but I will say, in my time here, that subcommittee for a development agreement negotiation has only consisted of two members of the city council. There's Brown Act considerations, too, so you can't have more members of the city council unless it's an agendized item. So that would be through any kind of public review process with the full commission as an agendized topic. The subcommittee allows for those two members of the council to work on this with staff and negotiate with the applicant. So I can't answer a lot of your question with legality, but I will say, since I've been here for 16 years, it's solely been city council members.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful context. Do other commissioners have any follow-up questions on Mr. Prada's announcements and Do commissioners have any other reports or announcements? Okay, I see none. I have a brief, I'm not really sure if it constitutes a report. I had the opportunity to look at the publicly available recording of the August 27th city council meeting, in which city council did call up a previous planning commission approval for the service station at, I don't have it here in my notes, on Willow. And I think it was, as a member of this commission, it was very relevant and interesting for me to hear the discussion that city council brought to light. I think the city council called it up, in my understanding, because city council was aware, had solicited and was aware of additional feedback from folks in the neighborhood related to concerns about the gas station, as well as the process. It was, I think, important for us to just sort of be aware of what happens if our decisions after we have made them, or recommendations after we have made them. So I brought it back. I just wanted to bring it back to us for full circle. The end result, and please, Mr. Prada, correct me if I have missed important pieces of information here, but was that the applicant landmark on behalf of Chevron removed their request for alcohol sales, and also has potentially going to reduce the size of the convenience store, all in response to some questions and concerns that were raised within the community, and were brought to city council through members of council. So I think I'm always grateful to sort of see that the process is working, where if there's a decision that happens at planning commission that is, needs further public discussion, needs further public input, there's a place for that to happen in city council. So I think the process worked, and I think it's, I personally will take away from reviewing that, how to ask more thoughtful questions about the level of public feedback that has happened on some of these more important developments, and potentially a new way of thinking about applications for alcohol sales, off-site alcohol sales. Mr. Prada, please, if I've mis- summarized anything to your recollection, I would appreciate a correction.
No, that was thorough and accurate. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, if there are no further reports and announcements, okay, we can move on to the next section of our agenda, which is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission under public comment for a limited three minutes. You're not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agendized issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. So to learn how to participate, I'm going to turn to our clerk for this evening, Mr. Turner, to explain details of participation, and then begin our public comment period. Mr. Turner, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. So during the public comment period, members of the public will have three minutes to share their comments or questions. If you want to do this remotely, you can click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternately, if you are calling into tonight's meeting, you can click star nine on your keypad to notify staff you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we will make sure each person has a chance to speak. For those participating in person today, please fill out a comment card if you would like to give public comment and hand it to me. So at the moment, we have one hand online, Ellie Fishbacher Maldonado, and no comment cards from in-person participants. So we can start with Ellie. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. Yes, my name is Ellie Fishbacher Maldonado, and I live here in Menlo Park, and I'm calling, or I'm dialing in to make a comment about the current proposed low-income housing that is meant to be constructed in the current downtown area. While I think it's a noble, and I support finding low-income housing, I think that this really is the wrong solution for our community. It would dramatically change the character of our downtown. And most important, when Mayor Combs says, "But in this case, you're getting the land for free for the developers," I don't think we should be giving away our public land to anyone for private gain. And there's no question that the developers will gain from this, and there are other ways that the state can provide financing for these projects that doesn't involve changing the character of our downtown. Additionally, I'm concerned about property values in the surrounding area, traffic, our schools, which are already overcrowded. I think there are many more unintended consequences that I haven't thought of. But I really, I also don't like the idea of having a parking lot that is higher than any existing building in the community. Finally, I think this will be bad for the businesses who are currently in the downtown area. It will be too congested, and with that, I'll just say that I want to reiterate that we should not be giving our public land in order to provide a solution for developers who don't want to build these housing things. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Turner, at this time, do we have other hands raised online?
We do not have any more hands raised at this time.
All right. Then I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of our agenda. Next, we will move on to our consent calendar. There is only one item on our consent calendar for today, which is the approval of the meeting minutes for the August 12th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Do any of my commissioners, fellow commissioners, wish to pull agenda items, this agenda item off the consent calendar? Okay. Mr. Turner, would you please provide instructions regarding public comment for the consent calendar?
Yes. Once again, if you would like to give public comment, please click the raise hand button on your Zoom, or star nine if you're calling into tonight's meeting. Alternately, please hand me a comment card if you're participating in person. At the moment, I do not see any hands raised for the consent calendar.
Still no hands, Mr. Turner?
No hands.
All right. Then I will go ahead and close the public comment period for our consent calendar, and bring it back to the dais for a vote of, on the consent calendar. Oh, I guess we need a motion. I think Commissioner Doe, did you make, was that a first to approve the consent calendar?
I would like to make a motion to do so.
All right. Vice Chair Eric.
Second.
All right. We have a first and a second to approve the consent calendar and the single agenda item, which is the August 12th Planning Commission meeting minutes. I will call it vote now. Commissioner Doe, oh, sorry, Commissioner Beruzzi.
Hi.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is five yeses, and we are, that's true, five affirmative, affirmative votes, one absence, and one commissioner who is recused this evening. So we will go ahead, and we pass, and move into the next section of our agenda, which is the public hearing. We have only one item, F1, in our public hearing item today, and this is regarding the use permit at 734 and 736 Partridge Avenue. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing one-story duplex and construct two new two-story, single-family residences and one detached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R2, or Low Density Apartment District. Each proposed residence includes an accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. The project also includes one development-related heritage tree removal, which was reviewed and conditionally approved by the city arborist, and determined this action is categorically exempt under CEQA Guidelines, Section 15303's Class III Exemption for New Construction or Conversion of Small Structures. Mr. Turner, is there a update or short presentation, either by staff or the applicant, this evening?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schindler. I do have one quick update. Staff received some questions this afternoon regarding the level of neighborhood outreach for this project. The applicant did submit a, some documentation about their outreach efforts, which was accidentally omitted from the staff report and attachments. So I did provide some hard copies at the desk, but to summarize generally, the applicant did some outreach and received some feedback, which was generally positive. And that is, that's the end of my updates. I can take any initial questions. Otherwise, the applicant is here to say some brief remarks on the project.
Do any commissioners have clarifying questions for staff, for Mr. Turner? I see none. Welcome.
Thanks for having us tonight here.
Thank you. To be at, be perfect, be sure that microphone is working, so everybody, anybody online can hear you as well.
Awesome, thank you. So as you are aware, we are proposing two, two-story, single-family residence in R2 in substandard lots. And my name is Adalon. I'm the designer of the project, and Ellie is the client of mine. So I'm gonna start with floor area calculations, and then walk you through on the site plan and also the exterior design. So can you please share the sheets, A02? Yes, A02, floor area calculations. So on this project, we try to meet the maximum load floor area calculation, floor area. And for the front unit, we are proposing detached garage, and for the second unit in the back, we are proposing attached garage. And the ADUs will be placed on the left side of both residence. Based on the minimum landscape requirements, we are proposing more than 40% landscaping area for this project. And regarding to the exterior design, we aim to harmonize the new residence with the existing neighborhood by blending the design, which is selecting the material and the finishes to blend the new design to the neighborhood. So we are also proposing a new driveway. You can see on sheet A10A. The new driveway will be placed at the exact location that the existing driveway is, and that car turnaround and everything is reviewed by the transportation, and everything is okay so far. So due to the, having the detached garage in the front unit and attached garage in the second unit, we are proposing two different layouts for both residence. And in regards of the exterior design for the front elevation, we are proposing an accent valve, which is covered with the veneer stone for a better visualization from the street, and also providing some cosmetic design, like having corbelts and decorative arches above the windows. And in order to meet the consideration about the neighbor's privacy, we try to place the windows at the required sill height, and also require setbacks for all the facets. In regards of the maximum height allowed, we are below the maximum height allowed for both residence. And also, we have provided some rendering on sheet A36, A37, and also A38. Yeah, I think this is pretty much it, but if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer this. Thank you so much.
Do commissioners have any clarifying questions before we move into the public comment component of this agenda item? Thank you. No clarifying questions at this time, but they may come up during discussion later.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Turner, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment on this, this agenda item, and start the comment period, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schindler. So once again, if you would like to give public comment on this item, and you're participating remotely, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or star nine if you are calling in. If you are in person and would like to give public comment, please fill out a comment card and hand it to me. At the moment, we do not have any hands raised. I give it a couple seconds here.
Give it just a couple of seconds. Are there any hands raised online, Mr. Turner?
Still no hands raised and no comment cards.
All right. Thank you. Given that, let's go ahead. I will go ahead and close the public comment period for this agenda item, and bring the discussion back to the commission, and ultimately for a motion on this use permit. Do commissioners have questions or comments for, thank you for stuff. Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair. Earlier today, I had some questions regarding the use permit and heritage tree removal processes, so thank you for answering my questions in advance, Mr. Turner. And from that information that I received, I understood that, I understand that part of the early process with the city arborist does include creating an alternate design that keeps the tree, and I'm talking about that coast live oak in the back, and a cost analysis of the alternate design and proposed design. And Mr. Turner clearly explained the threshold and the decision-making process. In addition, if I may, through the chair, I wanted to ask the applicant, just for a little bit more light on why an alternative that would have preserved the tree wasn't pursued.
So for the proposal of the removal of the heritage tree, we explored two options during the initial design. So my clients required attached garage for the second unit in the back. So in order to save the trees, we couldn't have the second garage for that residence. So, and we have to go through the basement, go to the basement and create a covered parking for, to meet that requirement. So unfortunately, the tree is placed in the footprint of the proposed project, and after discussion with the city arborists, we decided to apply for the tree removal.
Thank you.
Sure.
So thank you for answering my question. I'll just share my comment. I'm entirely supportive of the housing that the project proposes on the site, and as the letter states from the homeowner, the project proposal meets all the guidelines provided by the City of Menlo Park Planning Department, as well as the heritage tree replacement requirements. And I entirely want this project to proceed, as you've clearly all been engaged in this process for a while, looking at the history of the correspondence. I just, I'm just having this irrational Lorax in my head that's making it hard for me to support a use permit if it means removing a mature oak tree. So that's just my honest feeling, and maybe I'm, maybe it's a bit out of proportion, but I'm happy to look to my fellow commissioners if they have any perspective to share.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. Other commissioners have perspectives, questions? Commissioner Farrak?
Thank you. Also fully supportive. I think this looks like a nice project, and I always look at the data table as one of my key sources of giving me a hint as to what might be really, you know, problematic or not, and I appreciate that you brought all the setbacks into conformance. The parking requirement is two covered spaces, plus one covered and one uncovered for, well, that's the zoning ordinance. Anyway, I guess as it relates to the tree, it is unfortunate, but I guess where I'd like to see us potentially take that up is in just removing any parking requirements or as strict of parking requirements in just removing any parking requirements or as strict of parking requirements in multifamily housing developments so that we're not prioritizing car housing over heritage oaks. But I wouldn't want to stop this project because of a policy that, you know, that the city's leaned into over the many decades. So I guess, you know, we also have, you're not allowed to park on the street, and so the cars do have to go somewhere. So that might be another area of study at a future date, not related to this particular project. So I guess where mine is, and I just appreciate all the renderings. There were some that came through with funny, I couldn't read the numbers, like they came through weird. I don't know if that was you. Okay, not just me. That's good. And so I couldn't tell what the heights and of some of the structures were. But generally, the volume of different views and renderings were really helpful. So thank you for those. Hopefully, the system you use will spit out numbers and letters next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farick. Other commissioners?
Can I just reply? Thank you Chair. I just want to reply back to Commissioner Farick because I'm on, I'm on the, I'm on the fence, right? Because we love the trees. We all do. I think, I will just say to parking requirements, I do agree that a city discussion, some sort of policy we look, we need to look at, would be great, you know, we can look at that. I do think in this particular case, I did read that no, the city cannot impose any minimum parking on this. But I do agree with you that people will still need to park their car somewhere, regardless of the fact that no minimum parking can be required for this project. But I do agree with you that cars will need to park somewhere. You're not allowed to park overnight. People have cars. That's just reality. And I guess when I, when I do vote, it's because I do want your project to succeed. You have met all the guidelines that the city has in place. And I, and I think to Commissioner Farick's point, this is about maybe having conversations about parking. You know, there's, you know, an urban forest plan is in the works that includes re-looking at the heritage tree ordinance to just understand, you know, how the policy plays out. So I just want to say thank you for your perspective, Commissioner Farick.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you Chair Schindler. I have a question for the applicant. And I will say upfront that my vote does not hinge on the answer to this question at all. I am just curious. You're planning to build two homes. What are you planning to do with the one that you're not planning to live in?
My client wants to, and the primary units will be the rear back unit. And they're gonna rent the front units in the future. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That is really helpful and great to hear. I think this is a great project and I think a lot of thought went into it. As I was reading it, it struck me that we're compared to a, most things we see where we're building one house, we're adding a unit of housing here to Menlo Park, which is great. And it got me thinking about whether or not we could do that more. And since we only have one item tonight, I wanted to share some thoughts on that. If my fellow commissioners will indulge me, I promise I won't go too long. But I did have correspondence with Mr. Turner today about thinking about the difference between R1 properties and R2 properties. This property is zoned R2. There are far more R1U properties in our city than R2 properties. There are about 4,000 R1U lots and only 250 or thereabouts R2 properties. But interestingly, the average lot area of R1 and R2 lots is basically the same, a little more than 7,000 square feet. And the zoning requirements in terms of setbacks and required width and required depth and all of the things that we normally care about are also the same. And as evidenced by this project, it seems pretty clear that you can build two houses on a lot and have it fit in pretty well into the neighborhood. If you look at it in a little bit more depth, pardon the pun, this lot is a little bit deeper than I think normally ones that we see. It's around, I think it's 187 feet deep. And data about the depth of lots is a little bit hard. And Mr. Turner couldn't pull that up really quickly. Fortunately, someone smarter than me has used public data available from San Mateo County. And I don't think this is official data, but we're not making any decisions on this tonight, so I feel comfortable sharing it just so that we could know. But if you look at R1 and R2 properties of greater than 150 feet in depth, there's a greater percentage of R1 properties in our city that are that deep compared to the percentage of R2 properties, at least according to this analysis. There are 1,450 lots in Menlo Park zoned R1 that are at least 150 feet deep. There are a little less than 1,000 lots that are greater than 160 feet deep. There are 600 lots that are greater than 180 feet deep. And I, all this got me to thinking that next time we are looking at the housing element or thinking about adding housing to our city, this, I think, is a fairly elegant way of doing it. And I just want to state for the record that I hope this is something that we consider. In particular, I want to note, Mr. Turner pointed out to me in a micro sense that if you look at the streets directly adjacent to Partridge Avenue, which we're considering tonight, College Avenue and Middle Avenue, those streets in the context of downtown actually stick out are anomalous for having R1 zoning as opposed to most of the streets around them that have R2 and R3 zoning. So if we decide to consider as a city this type of solution, I think that would be an easy place to start. And with that, I will conclude my comments and thank you for a lovely project that I think makes a good point about housing in our city.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Vice Chair Eric. Very interesting. Commissioner Peruzzi.
I had one thing that I was curious about, and similarly, this doesn't affect my vote at all. But I haven't seen this configuration of ADUs before. And I know that ADUs are just entitled. That's the law. I'm curious, are you expecting that you would rent the ADUs as well? Or maybe not?
For the front unit, I think yes, but this is a better question for my client. But for the rear unit, they're gonna use the ADU as a residence for their, for his kids. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's helpful to understand. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. I also share the enthusiasm of a number of other commissioners for this particular project. Having had a chance to walk around the neighborhood and take a look at similarly laid out pieces of property with the two units, including the two units and a detached garage, which I really hadn't noticed until I went looking for it. But specifically, I think this, this layout is very consistent with other pieces of property that are very nearby, which makes it, you know, just further emphasizes what I already assumed. It's a very effective use of space. And this represents things that this commission has been very supportive of in terms of building more housing, building higher density, particularly in zones that are close, closer to downtown, closer to El Camino, closer to transportation resources. So I think from all of those sort of fundamental vision perspectives, this, this project meets the direction that we would love for things to go in. And I'm fully supportive of it. I have two small questions that are primarily from my sort of curiosity. One is with regard to the shared tree that is on the right side of the property line. It looks like in the diagrams, the driveway just is slightly carved out around it. I'm wondering if there is any particular ideas, creative ideas for protecting that tree, given that that is probably the narrowest part of a driveway that will be serving two homes. And it's a big, beautiful tree. Just hope nobody nicks it in the dark, I guess.
Of course, yeah. We had a lot of discussion regarding this tree with our project arborists and also the city arborists. So our arborists provide some solution to, to protect these trees to tree edge, to protect it. So under Arborist's report, I'm gonna bring it up. Yes, the current, I mean, the current situation of the trees, the way they cover the trunk with asphalt and concrete is not good. So in our proposal, we are going to provide kind of mulch or, I mean, bark around it. And per our discussion with the city arborists, we need to have half a feet, one and half a feet of this material around the trees to protect it. So we, we are trying to keep this tree alive. And also, we had some discussion with our neighbors, the neighbors that we shared this tree with them. And they're gonna also, I mean, they agree with this proposal. So we are trying to keep this project, to the tree safe.
I think, of course, defer to the arborist for ideas about how to ensure the long-term health of the tree. I'm thinking even significantly less sophisticated question, which is how to keep people from bumping into it with their car as they drive by. As the parent of teenagers, I'm aware that this is an issue. And I just was just curious about what you can do to prevent that over time. It's, it's not, it's not a significant question as it relates to the project, but it certainly popped to mind for me and I hope that, that the tree can be protected from people who are perhaps just distracted while they're pulling home, pulling into the house. My slightly, slightly more relevant conversation is regarding on the back house. So Unit 2 in the diagrams, the left side elevation, there was, was something that struck me as I just looked at it and I had a quick question. So this is on staff report. It's page 39 or in the plans, it's A26. The, the left side elevation of that back house, which is the side with the ADU. When I looked at the elevations, I was a little struck by the, the amount of uninterrupted wall there was, both on the first and second floor at the back of the house compared to most of the other walls on both houses. So on the first floor, that's the wall of the ADU living room. And on the second floor, it's the wall of the master bathroom. And so my question was just, were windows considered here? Either on the first or second floors? For example, a high window, like in the small toilet room, just to provide additional light on that side?
Yeah, because we want to have a consistency between the elevations. We are proposing that window between two vanities and the mirror on the side. So I'm not sure if I understand it correctly. You're referring to the master bedroom window, right?
So, thank you. This is the side elevation on the bottom. So this is the back house. So on the, if I've read the plans correctly, on the second floor, this would be in the back of the house, the bathroom. And so it's part, let's see, you can look, also look at page. And then there's a small toilet room, room with just a toilet in it. So yes, that's, that's the, the view that I was looking at. So I was just curious about whether windows had been considered.
Yeah, we can have a window over there, yeah.
Not, not, so it was considered and, and took, and, and turned down? Or was there, I was just curious?
Yes, we didn't propose any window for the other closet area. But we can have a window over there, yeah.
It certainly is not a requirement of approval. I think that the project as it stands is, is, meets all of the requirements. It was simply a question just on a practical as well as personal preference as well as an exterior aesthetic question. So if, I encourage the applicant just to think about whether or not a small, high window in that toilet room would add to the overall utility.
Yeah, actually, it's a great comment because we have a portion of the wall without any opening. So that would be a great suggestion, yeah. We're gonna consider that window.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that was all that I had just in terms of commentary.
Thank you so much.
Do other commissioners have other comments or questions for applicant or staff? All right, I don't see any other. Do any commissioners want to make a motion with regard to this use permit? We're considering this evening.
I'm happy to make a motion, but I wanted to let Commissioner Doe say anything else.
No, I was pointing, Vice Chair Eric.
I move to approve the use permit as per the staff report.
We have a first from Vice Chair Eric to approve the, approve the resolution approving the use permit. And we have a second from Commissioner Farick.
Oh no, I was actually gonna ask, based on your comment and based on their thinking that may be a good idea, is there a possibility of including a friendly amendment to the motion to give them that flexibility to potentially add a window at a certain height on that certain elevation?
Certainly, I think that's a strong possibility. Mr. Turner, Mr. Prada, is it, is it necessary to include in the approval of the resolution a condition that would allow for that additional window on the second floor of that particular wall of the back house? Or is it something that could be left unstated and still would be acceptable?
Sorry. In this case, it could probably, it would probably be in conformance with the approved plans. However, it might be helpful to include the condition just to confirm we have that flexibility.
Would it save us going through a substantial conformance process and review process if we put it in?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Chair Eric, would you be, would you be amenable to such a friendly amendment?
Yes, if it would avoid a substantial conformance memo. I think that's a wise idea.
Can I just, thank you Chair, clarify my understanding. I think that the conversation just now is on the window in the upstairs bathroom, which I totally agree with, once you pointed out that elevation. I know you guys didn't cover quite as much the downstairs of that elevation also being rather blank. So I don't know if it's necessary to include that level of detail. But I, just based on the, the spirit of the feedback, to extend that flexibility to that elevation, bottom floor and top floor.
I'm very open to revising the motion, but I'm gonna need some help with how to word it to appropriately capture.
Mr. Turner, do you have a suggestion that would result in the least amount of risk of doing a substantial conformance review if additional windows were added to those two locations? If the, if the applicant were, were decided to do that ultimately?
Yes, I was just drafting it. So I think we could say simultaneous with, simultaneous with this middle of complete building permit application, the applicant may revise the elevations of the rear unit, the left side rear, of the rear unit to include windows consistent with the design upon review and approval by the planning division.
Vice Chair Eric, does that meet with yours, the, the letter and the spirit of your, your, your first?
Yes, I move to, I revise my motion. Yes, I move to, I revise my motion to approve the use permit as per the staff report. And I would like to add a condition that simultaneous with the submitted of a complete building application, the applicant may revise elevations of the rear unit to include windows consistent with the design, subject to review and approval by the planning department.
To me, to my ear, that sounded consistent with what Mr. Turner suggested. Mr. Turner? All right, we have a thumbs up from Mr. Turner that that was consistent with his recommendation.
So, through the chair, if I may, Mr. Turner and I don't have the benefit of being right next to each other to kind of confer. I think, I understand the commission's intent, and I think this evening, Mr. Turner and I understand and can implement that way. You know, as projects come forward though, staff may, different staff may work on it, things may change. I just want to kind of maybe make it a little more objective for future staff if, if we could, recognizing that I think the intent was there. And I would probably keep it the same, but maybe identify that for the second floor left side, and a single additional window at what I think is a five-foot sill height to match the other kind of high windows, recognizing that there might have been a formatting issue with the packet, like when we compressed the PDF, but the plans that were submitted show five foot there. So, I would put that and then say, you know, and the ground floor elevation may be revised per Mr. Turner's statement with kind of consistency. I think that's fine. Ground floor, much more staff flexibility to change windows and doors, especially on the rear side elevation versus a front facade. So, that would be something we would typically do anyway. And as Mr. Turner mentioned, we're, we're generally comfortable with adding this single window even without this condition. But if we're gonna go the step of adding the condition, it's super helpful to have that kind of objective review. So, I think a single additional window at five feet would be kind of how I'd phrase that, and then leave everything else the same. And we don't necessarily need to repeat it, because I think we have it, but if you want, Mr. Turner can read that back. So, apologies there, we're, we're at 60 feet away this evening.
I'm comfortable with that, and so move.
Thank you. I think we have a first that includes the, the spirit and the additional helpful detail, particularly on the second floor. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Prada. Do we have a second? Commissioner Peruzzi, we have a second from Commissioner Peruzzi. So, we have a first and a second to approve the use permit with the language that allows for second floor window above, a second floor window with a five-foot sill and a additional first floor window, this is on the back unit, that is consistent. I think Mr. Turner has the more eloquent wording that I will not try and have, not try and dig up again. So, with that, I will call a vote on this one. Commissioner Peruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Vice Chair Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farick?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Oh, please, yes, please, before.
The first floor as well? We have a fireplace, so can we have two windows on both sides of the fireplace in the ADU living room?
I, I think the intention was to allow for the possibility, not, certainly not at all to require it.
Okay.
And so, in light of that, I would encourage you, please, to do what is best sort of with, with the applicant's preference. I think this is mostly creating the condition of allowing for you to move forward if those, that is your choice, without having to go through an additional round of city processes, because we want this project to move forward quickly, without having to go through additional labor.
Thank you so much.
Great. So, that is five affirmative votes, one commissioner who is recused and one who is absent. Congratulations. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Yeah, thank you so much for all of your help, yeah. Thank you.
All right, so that closes out the public hearing component of our agenda this evening. Mr. Prada, are there, anyone from staff wish to provide an update on upcoming planning commission meetings or any other informational items?
Yes, thank you. So, just quickly, the next meeting will be September 23rd. We have three items scheduled for that meeting, two single-family homes and one use-based use permit on El Camino Real. And that's for a massage therapy use at 433 El Camino. The other two are single-family residential use permits. And so, that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Farick, please.
Just to note that I will be absent on the 23rd of September.
Thank you for that advance notice. All right, if there are no other informational items this evening, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:58 PM. Thank you all for your time this evening. Have a good evening.